State ethics and the secretaries.
And each of the four core town, town office will have their own mechanism to finish the -- there's probably some paper on the wall somewhere for each of them.
It's Massachusetts and we just got rid of Tom Crier. But it's not like 150 years people are posting on the website that they're using.
Well, one of the charter schools I talked to actually said that they were able to meet it by just focusing on one secretary, so I'm not sure how that could possibly be. But they were --
That might clarify a violation.
They are in Springfield, so I mean, then they weren't regional, so they only get the money.
Different than the guidance that I received. Executive session, I put a hand on the holder of the various reasons for executive session. For this presentation, I've focused on the reasons that we had thought into executive session versus the general open meeting law, which is designed to cover any and all public bodies in Massachusetts. So to enter open session, you have to first enter executive session. First, you have to meet convenant open session. Second, you have to state the reason or reasons for executive session without compromising the purpose. Some of the reasons require that you be a little more specific, that it would -- holding an open session would compromise the meeting. You have to answer the question of whether you'll read convenant open session, and then you need to take a roll call vote. Pretty straightforward, we've done this enough time. In executive session, we have three responsibilities. One is to keep accurate records. We must take roll call votes for all votes taken in the executive session, and the executive session can only cover the matters that have been identified in the public announcement. So we can't go into executive session to discuss labor relations and then have a discussion about purchasing property. Here's the reasons, you have it in front of you, but I pulled out in here, the ones I've starred are the ones that you have to -- the chair must state ahead of time if the discussion in open session would be detrimental. And these are particular ones that we have used or in fact we've been doing tonight, preparing strategy for litigation or collective bargaining. Other aspects, open and out of the meeting law. An individual from the audience may not address a word without permission from the chair other than our public speech session. A meeting is being recorded by attendees. And particularly, one of the things that open meeting law does allow, but we, our bylaws do not, is remote participation. So a board member or a public body member must be physically present to participate in the meeting. That only covers the members of the board. So for example, we have this consultant from Carnegie Sandow gave us a remote presentation. That's fine. But we as board members, or in the case of a committee member, also applies to the committee member, also is applying to the exec ed search committee passwords, all those members must be participating in person if they are a member of the committee.
Can somebody be in the audience live? Like can it stream? Or could somebody have like a recording device?
So yes, it could be streamed. Yes, a member of the audience could have a recording device, as long as they're not disruptive to the purpose, to the practice of the meeting, that they wouldn't be able to participate in public speech, they wouldn't be able to participate in public speech at the discretion of the chair. They could record, and we could -- it is, well, many towns broadcast their school community meeting.
Could we have remote participation, remote listening in? I mean, so not speaking? So for example, you know, Craig's not here, everybody's looking here, could they be on the phone and listen in if they don't speak?
Good question. I think the answer is yes. Just as per an audience member, that if they were watching remotely, they could do that.
But the only reason why we have that though is because of our bylaws, because you know, other boards, you can, you know.
Yeah, right.
Somebody could listen, because many are streamed live, so a person could be listening. Just if they should, if you just simply change your bylaws, because it's not an O&L that permits a remote act.
Yeah, in fact, is for, polls that we're applying to push forth in government is to propose a OML, or propose the remote participation for meetings and guidance for that. There's very concrete and specific rules regarding when you can do remote participation. It's not just like feel like it, it's, there's some very, very specific rules.
Geographically challenged, you're sick.
But it is our goal, especially with the expanded board now of 13 people, that we see that remote participation could be a good thing. All right. Other questions?
Quorum?
Quorum. For a, for a meeting, it's 50% plus one, so our voting board is 12.
13.
But what does quorum have to do with open meeting?
So, good question. So first, the quorum of the board is seven right now. So if we have seven people deliberating, let me go back to the first slide, deliberating and communicating of a matter of the board's jurisdiction, then it has to be done in open meeting. So if three people are communicating and deliberating on something that's within the board's jurisdiction, generally that's okay, as long as you don't daisy chain. Like Chris, you and I talk, and then Chris, you talk to Mike, and Mike talks to Ev, and Evan talks to Allison, Allison talks to Pauline, and Jessica, all about the same topic, that's, at that point, you're broken open meeting law, because they're supposed to be deliberating in public. It also could, for committee, the public body, the public body doesn't just apply to this board meeting, it's any, any public body grouping of the board that's assigned a particular task. So it applies to all committees. It typically applies to task force type things where the chair has assigned a group to take on a long-term responsibility. That's the area where things come out to me, it's a little more, a little more gray on when a, and when a smaller grouping is acting to make a decision versus researching a topic. Research is okay, deliberating and making a decision for the full board is probably not okay.
Maybe you just did this, but are you clarifying the difference between a task force and a committee? And if you didn't, can you?
I can't. A committee is an officially defined body in our bylaws. It has official legal meaning as to what a committee is. A task force, our definition of task force is not a legal term. It's something that we have, it is something that we created, meaning in general, which what we take it as the definition is less than the quorum of the board assigned to do a particular task. But there's no legal definition of what a task force is. The open meeting law just says that if you're a public body working on a matter in front of the board, then you would need to meet an open meeting.
But is that something we want to do, Roger, maybe moving forward, define what a task force is somewhere, and make it for the purposes of research?
Yeah, I'm working toward helping to define that, but it really is a one-off. I've finally come up with some guidelines in working with the [inaudible].
Yeah, but I think that in purposes for research is important.
You can group together and work on research.
Research a topic and return with options.
Yes.
It's not deliberating.
That is that, well, it is deliberating in that you are working together, but you are not making a decision, you're not taking on a role that the full board can take on.
Just information gathering.
Information gathering, sending out information to the board without discussion, those are fine, it's a no committee, there is no deliberation. Like you send out, well, Pauline just sent out the board report, the board private survey report. As long as there's no discussion, that's purely communication. Like I sent out the minutes. Again, without discussion, then are fine.
Can you clarify, when within the board we're emailing each other, if those are, I know they're public in the sense that if somebody went and searched for them, like that you would have to, I don't know, can you just clarify, like, the emails?
Is the question about what?
Like, do you think it's public or not? Yeah. Every email that we send between each other is public?
I would refer to a lawyer to answer that question. Anything that, any, I can answer, how about, I can answer a slightly different question. Any document that we present at a board meeting, at a committee meeting, is a public document. So all of those are public documents. Anything that's documented for the executive session is also public documented, but it is held under confidentiality until the event occurs that makes it no longer needing to be confidential. So part of our goal is on the website to not only have, like this presentation, only on the website, any, all the documents that we put forth in today's meeting, we should, our goal is to have not only the meeting minutes, but then document one, two, three, four, all the documents, et cetera. If you send a email to me saying, Roger, what is, what is this aspect of the meeting law, and I can respond back to you personally, I don't believe that that would be a public document, in my non-lawyer opinion.
I'm pretty sure it is. I'm pretty sure that if you're at a meeting capacity as a board member or something, it's a public document. Certainly anything that passes through our systems are all public documents.
Except that they're related to any kind of ongoing litigation or collective bargaining or anything like that, that is protected.
Yes, but that, then even then, they're just like, like, thank, you're a lawyer, aren't they, just, it can still be retrieved, you just have to be adapted.
Well, you work product or attorney.
It depends, yeah.
So, for example, you emailed the charter renewal thing, or the results of the charter renewal, and like, there was things in there, like, can I go to other teachers and say, this was in this, or it, or even, I'm always scared that I'm going to do something on the board that I have confidential stuff I'm going to tell people, and I don't want to do that.
So generally, the rule would be, if it's not sent out by administration or by the board broadly, ready for dissemination, then it's probably not ready for dissemination, if that makes sense.
Yes.
What about committees? So with committees, we have committees that have board members and non-board members. So quorum in a committee, is that only counting board members or board and non?
The quorum of committee would be the members of, including non-board members. So as defined, in our bylaws, committee chair defines the members of the committee.
So we should actually, so do our committees actually, you know, I don't know.
So like, for example, I can seek the fundraising.
I'm raising as non-board members.
We have non-board members.
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of non-board members.
And they're officially on committee members?
I have.
But are you saying, Roger, that that, a quorum is defined in the committee by the number of board members plus non-board members? Is that how you have to hold the committee? Do you have to have a quorum?
For the committee to meet as a committee, they would have to have a quorum of the committee.
Of commit, of committee?
Of the committee. Like, for example, there's four members, there's four members on the fundraising committee, two people would have to be there.
And it doesn't matter whether those are two board members or not, is what you're saying? Could it just be the two? Could it just be?
Three, sorry, I failed my math roll. So you have to be, quorum is 50% plus one, so if you have a four-member committee, you need three people there to do business. But remember, it could be all three non, it could all be, if you had a committee with one board member and three non-board members, three non-board members can get together and have a meeting.
What, I'm sorry, I can't. Like, I feel at our committee, we have some people who come all the time, but how do you know when someone's officially a member and somebody's just always there?
The chair is the chair.
The chair, the chair of the committee is the order of the members.
We, the chair determines.
Yeah, we, and we're, we're chairful.
I'm sorry, did you hear?
No, it's your personal.
I think that just, there was that one policy or process that I was beginning to write for government committee, it's very important, that we try to, you know, keep that on, just unless to look at the board meeting. Just in case that's a new question. Maybe Chris, you just tried to.
What? Sorry, I was having a [inaudible].
Any other questions?
Other question?
All right.
If you have further open meeting law questions, they can go either to myself or to Pauline as the government chair. Myself as the chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
All right. Ed committee.
So, we're sort of about new course offerings. And so we have eight new courses that we'll be offering for students next year. First, on computer science, we'll be offering Introduction to Cybersecurity and Photography. We did introduce this, a couple of it, to our folks at the eighth grade event we had for folks to understand course offerings for the high school we had this week. And there will be a sign-off, because basically that's teaching hacking. So there'll be a sign-off form, and they will be building a separate server also, so that they can't access computer. But anyway, that's, that's actually a pretty exciting course that we're going to be offering. In the English department, we'll be offering Contemporary World Voices course. This students will read and respond to contemporary culturally relevant material, such as what does it mean to be a modern world citizen? And we'll also be offering a literature program, and that's exploring that, is it offers employees to bring characters to life and why it works on the page.
What distinguishes Contemporary World Voices as an honors class?
Why is it honors as opposed to non?
Right, and I ask the question strictly in the context of my development to the answer, and then I look at the intro of cybersecurity, and we're saying, who presents it for that? Was the AP computer science class? It seems like that, seems like it'd be a pretty high-level course itself, too. So I'm just wondering how we determine what does it as an honors course or not.
This is a question, I don't have the answer, Roger, unless you.
Well, I was going to say, in English, I think it works like history. If you think that the, I can't speak to the, yeah, if you, the reading level and the writing level that you expect to employ in the class, so that you're telling students if you sign up with this, expect a certain amount of reading and writing, whereas if it was a CP level, then it would be less.
Yeah, but that's not true.
So it's based on, that's not true enough.
No.
So it's you trying to determine, like, well, I guess, I don't know if it's as simple as saying the expected level of rigor, but I think we could get more clarity.
I think I might do something, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking at those two matched to each other and just asking the question.
Or maybe it will, maybe it is, but it's just not indicated here.
Right.
Nope, that's okay. Next, please. So art will be offering a new course, sorry, I was caught up with the topic, this is art. Three-dimensional art, seems we use a variety of different mediums, clay, wire, fabric, paint, plastic, cardboard, and glass to create three-dimensional sculptures. It's just with the project. And then we're also offering a new math course, Art, the World, and the Mathematical Perspective. Your students will explore the big picture as they investigate, and accord with their backgrounds and interests, how the arts and humanities connect with the mathematical evaluation, and guiding representing the human understanding of the world. As we went through these, discussing the Ed committee, we were all saying the same things, we all want to just be back in school and keep classes. In history, we had actually quite a selection of electives, so many that we couldn't offer all of them. So what we did is, we ran a poll for the students, and this year, about, I think, 10 or so electives that we were offering, we're going to be running five, or signals, top six of those. However, I know them, and they were sent out to the board. There's six of them. However, they're not all in courses, some of them are courses we've been offering, they just haven't run. But, but again, sometimes, you know, you dilute it so much because you're offering too many. So we whittled it down. These are the new ones that we knew our programs studies. And it was very interesting during the poll to see that the top three that came out all were courses that had to do with global topics, global issues, current events. So certainly a craving for that. And current events came out way ahead. So this is terrific, we're glad we're offering this new course. This elective will focus on major current events around the world. We'll also offer global military history. The elective will focus on the great military leaders and most important battles of world history from ancient times to the present. And then finally, this third one, global travel. This elective will introduce students to the history and the culture of nations, and the focus will be how and why is the world so diverse, and how and why is the world becoming world global? And this particular course may end up tying into a global certificate program that we hope to be proposing in the near future. We have a task force.
But they're not deliberating.
Thank you for laughing, Chris. A committee of teachers and students working on designing a global certificate program for students. So that course will likely be one of the requirements if you participate in that. There you have it, those are our new courses.
Are those one-year courses, that they're being piloted, or are they?
Well, I think we're adding them, and any course that doesn't run, you know, just doesn't go, then we would, you know, not continue it. The same way, we have some courses that have been on the books for a while, but again, we put the poll on, there's no interest, and, you know, sometimes it's generated by student interest, as well as with the passions and talents of the educators we happen to have on staff at the time, which I think is what makes it exciting, is you get some changes and some fresh ideas that are always trying to keep our curriculum current.
The teachers themselves, will they have to be trained for some of these courses? Or they're bringing this as part, it's already within their background?
Yeah, anything that was proposed is something because a teacher brought it forward, because I have a passion for something and I want to teach. That's not to say that we won't provide and encourage people to get professional development, whether it's a brand-new course, or whether it's something they've been doing for a long time. You can tell by now, I'm pretty passionate about making sure that people get PD and are able to always, you know, get their craft to be better and better.
Yeah, that's great, that there's some courses that they like to teach.
I think we have some math teacher that said, hmm, I really want to do art. So the board does have to approve this, this, the curriculum, generally, so we do leave a motion.
So.
Second. Okay, all in favor of adopting to do these new courses?
First motion.
Thank you, folks.
Allison.
Allison, second.
We can take them all at once, we didn't have, was that?
Well, we go to all at once, I can see how.
The package deal.
I guess if it was, if it was close, we could break it down. All right. Fundraising and Development Committee, update?
We met. We are, by our March meeting, which is Monday, we will have a plan for the annual campaign, which we're doing in the spring, it's the fall, which is what we're within the budget. So it's going to be an April annual giving campaign themed off the faculty grant program that Dr. Moll just introduced. We also will have, we're kind of planning the sandbox of corporate outreach, and each of us will be, will be reaching out to at least to corporations in the next few weeks, looking for a ready-up ways to partners, kind of how we'd like, how would you benefit from relationship with you, have you benefited from us?
So not just fundraising, but?
Cash is always in good taste, but also partnership, internships, experience.
Agenda requests for the March meeting. So we'll do the third-party, we fought the third-party pre, we'll talk about third-party early.
Yeah, I, I'll connect with you in a minute. We're going to try to do it.
What we'll discuss.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Wait, my turn.
Doesn't have to be from March, but I would like to, you have a presentation from the administration on kind of recent history, how many, how many of our students got here by lottery, and projecting out how many are going to be here by lottery. So I'm trying to get a handle on.
Do you mean, is everybody by lottery?
No, siblings of current students are not by lottery.
Well, they are too, but they get the highest priority in lottery.
It's still lottery, everybody.
Okay, then, then I need to get a clue on, what I want, have a better understanding of is, how is our penetration of the core towns changing over time?
Percentage of core town students?
Yes, thank you. Historically and projected going forward.
So that.
Because I think that's something that we should be.
Yeah, that enrollment data, don't we do that each? It's on, over, February? It's made of schedule, we have it sort of in our board calendar, like a schedule of when that report. And normally, I bring my middle government book with that schedule.
Okay, it is scheduled, like.
Well, I'd love to put it out and make sure that it gets on the board.
Yep.
Just to make sure that it's scheduled and upcoming, so if it's regularly scheduled for, if it is regularly scheduled, we'll hit it down, and if there's something you need before then, you can hit it out there.
Of course, we mentioned that we will have, we have an updated enrollment policy that will be on the agenda actually for the next meeting. So we decide whether or not you want to wrap that up.
Yeah, at a, at a high level, what I'm looking for is, how are we seeking to attract a student body that is representative of populations of the core towns?
So we actually do have to have a recruiting and retention policy, and so that actually will.
Okay, and I mentioned the data behind that.
So we can, because we're doing a present, Donald Campbell, who's our registrar, will be at the next meeting, anticipating to talk about the new enrollment policy.
Okay, so it's timely now, that's great.
That's number one, so that's that. The other thing I would mention, and I would like to do so, is, like to check out our website, if you go to our registration part now, we've, we've added a new PowerPoint with voiceover that folks can go to and learn about our policy, because prior to that, it was just the written policy, but it can be pretty confusing. But if you actually go in, you can.
Off for the [inaudible].
Yes, if you click on that.
Admissions, cross that video.
There you go. And now you're able to click on that, and now you get nice voiceover that kind of, especially for people who follow slides, it's a little bit less confusing than just reading the actual policy. So we were hopeful that would bring some clarification to the process, and the lottery did take place, just before the vacation break as well.
So just to follow to Chris's question, we have a breakdown of like, what percentage of the sophomore class is siblings, who came in because they were siblings? And then what percentage of the freshman class were siblings who got the spot because they were siblings? Is that what you're asking for?
Well, the question is about core towns versus non-core towns, a sibling question in the background, with the siblings and people from non-core towns, try to project that on the [inaudible].
It sounds like you're just looking for a variety kind of background data around the lottery process.
Well, I also have projection.
Projection. Projection, so what I'm, I'll, I'll try and write it down, I won't deliberate or anything, I promise, but, you know, be a little clear.
You can deliberate if you're.
I can write it down myself.
All right, that's on the agenda, what else?
Yep, yep.
Do you need to survey results?
Uh, yes, we should.
We'll have, we do.
Um, I also had annual goals.
Yeah, we've got the annual goals, that one's.
The other thing is, is that we have this, you know, homework that we did for the last meeting, and we talked about reviewing the information at the next meeting. We need to either do it in March or April, but we're talking. The charter.
Stuff from here.
Okay.
You put together.
Yep, yep.
We, we kind of just shared in five minutes, but we didn't really talk about.
I'm sure what Pauline will do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, didn't we just?
I mean, that was, I, I left there thinking that we were going to talk about it. That's how we ended the conversation, or that's how you were, kind of ended the conversation.
I think my understanding of that was that, that we were going to talk about it in the context of strategic planning, that it could, kind of, not as a separate sort of action item, so, that's how I was thinking about it, anyway, so.
I had it as a note or something, huh?
Because it, it gets hard about that whole, like, you know, the R5 and the mission and the, you plan, and we're just getting progressed and. Um, other agenda items? Uh, I'll look and see if there are others.
Standard, uh.
The standard updates, yeah.
Five, we take the E D search committee update and the principal search update, task force update.
All right, update on how the quiz show is doing on task force quiz show. On my E D for four months' time.
So, while, while you're there, Tom, do you mind going to our, our section?
To the board's section?
Yes. So, um.
Oh, yeah.
So, we have an overview, um, if you scroll down a little bit, there's an F Q, there's questions. If anybody can think of additional questions that we might want to add, please share them, and we'll add them. Um, there's links in there for, you know, you can go directly to wherever it is. Um, there's the trustee's bios, there's information specifically about joining the board. Um, there's information about the standing committees, so there's a description. If you don't believe your description is accurate for your committee, let me know. Um, we're beginning to post the minutes, we're just missing a few that we need to add. But we're beginning to post the second meeting minutes as well. Other, the policies and the playing documents are what they were before, but this is, you know, some of the, some of the tasks, I think, to support, um, it was really, it was actually something that's been on our plate for a long time, but it helps support some of the work that we're doing.
May I impose then, since you're there? We can take twenty more seconds, if you just go to the contact us in the upper right corner there, and see the first section, questions, and start here. And now you can see all the different categories that we created for people to be able to, um. So, you can see the categories, it will help direct people into different, different posts, categories. Hopefully, that will be.
Well, that's a new one.
It's a nice addition.
Some category of senior issues, so, so hopefully that will be.
This is like the top tools right there, right? Great stuff.
Yeah, it actually is, that's a lot.
That's how we wanted.
So, yeah, hopefully that will work.
All right. Okay, so we're going to wrap up our regular meeting, and we are, um, the board will go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, doing so in the meeting, we'll be getting that.
You have a roll call.
So, let's make a motion.
Yes, so, I've just made a motion. Roger, second. You have a roll call.
Hallo's name.
Or you can vote in turn.
Or you can say.
Or you can say, yes.
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 Yes, sir.